I call this meeting an order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, March 12, 2018, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were some personnel items in the table file.
Yes, there were. What we had is we had some additional appointments, some additional increases, decrease, and changes in assignment, and we also had a grant application approval.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you. If there are no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, February 26, 2018. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? And by Rob, is there a second? Second, final. Any questions or comments on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, February 26, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman.
Good evening. We have a couple of announcements this evening. We want to congratulate Ava Becken, and congratulations to Ava, who's an eighth-grade middle school student, for being the grand champion at the Spelling Bee Regionals in Rochester. Ava and her family will be traveling to Washington, DC in late May so she can compete in the National Spelling Bee. Ava's winning word was triturate. Amy Sieb is the Spelling Bee Coordinator, and we are proud of Ava and her accomplishment. Going to the National Spelling Bee is quite a big deal, and so we couldn't be more thrilled for Ava. That's awesome. And we also want to congratulate Junior Logan Ledman. We learned from Bruce Stowe, who's the post commander at VFW Post 4393 here in Northfield, that Logan competed in the Veterans of Foreign Wars National Voice of Democracy Competition in Washington, DC on March 5th. Logan took seventh place in the nation among all states and territories with his essay and speech titled "American History: Our Hope for the Future." And we want to congratulate Logan on this really amazing accomplishment, a national seventh-place, very competitive program. So congratulations to Logan and to Ava for representing our school district so well. So, we really appreciate that, and those are your announcements for this evening.
And we are going to invite Logan to present his speech to an upcoming school board meeting. So we'll work with him to schedule to do that.
I'm spell the word for me.
So, board members, any other items you'd like to add? Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right, we will move on then to discussions and reports tonight. We are fortunate to have Dr. Ryan Hop here to do a presentation on teenagers and sleep. Welcome, Dr. Hop.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be here. This is an opportunity for me to talk about something that's a passion of mine, which is sleep. I had an opportunity back in 2014 to address the school board, and this is sort of, I think, a little bit of an update on that. I'm going to be going through a presentation that I hope that you've all received in there or in that packet. I really tried to provide information for you to be able to research on your own, some of the information that I'm giving you. And after I'm done, then I'd like to be able to take any questions that you may have. So if we're going to start, and I'm going to slide this up and see if this doesn't work. So, one of the things that I think is, I'm pretty proud of, I've been in Northfield for about 17 years, is as a board, school board, I think the focus has always been on how do we help our kids to succeed and to thrive? And for me, I think part of that means that we need to consider or to start to look at later school start times. Part of that is because I really think it helps our kids to develop resilience and to really help with their growth in a number of areas. If you take a look, I'm going to go a little bit slide by slide here. Two of the most important studies that I think you might decide to look at because they're the most relevant includes the better academic testing. You know, we're here for learning, and we know that with improved sleep, there's improved learning. The Air Force Academy is a pretty significant study because the academy is run much like a school. And so it has seven classes. They have much more structure than you would expect even in a high school. One of the hard parts when you study late school start times is the difference in teachers, the difference in school-to-school comparisons. But what we have here with this study, and I'm not going to go through a full term or through all of it, but basically, they were able to, over three years, they moved their start times. You're talking, they looked at first-year students, so these were 18-year-olds, and then they were able to compare their grades because the classes were the exact same, taught by the same staff, graded in a way that takes a lot of variables out of it. So it's, that's why it's literally one of the best studies out there. Again, if you're going to do research on late school start times and the benefit academically, this is going to be one of your top choices. The second one, I'm going to, I mentioned now and I mentioned a little bit later, is a review of 38 studies. And again, it was put together by somebody through the National Institute of Health, and I think does a nice job of allowing you to look at different areas of focus. The other thing that's nice about it, and if you get to the PowerPoint, if that gets sent to you electronically, is when you put this in and it pulls up the website, you're able to see different studies that they looked at, so you individually can look at basically what they were looking at, and they have it under different categories. So it's a really nice way to review the studies yourself. So, we think if you have more sleep, which we think happens from having a later school start, we think that that helps academically. We also think that it helps with mental health. And there's a number of studies that go with this. They don't always go with late school starts, so I want to be clear that we know that there's a connection. I don't think that there's as clear a connection to late school starts. I pulled up something that came from an abstract, and then another one that looked at school diaries where the students were keeping track of when they went to sleep, how much sleep they got, and then they were able to, I believe, track back a little bit and look at some of the mental health, I don't want to call them scores, but areas of concern. And so we do think that with improved sleep, which we do think comes from later school starts, there's improved mental health. Improved concentration. I pulled a study that came, or maybe not a study, a website that came out of Harvard. What I liked about this one was that there are some videos from national sleep scholars that you can track onto yourself. Again, it's a really good website to be able to look at why we think late school start can be beneficial, what it can do for learning. I don't think this should be our number-one focus at all, and yet there's been very clear evidence that there's improved athletic performance. Again, as a school system, I don't know that that's something that we want to focus on, but that is one of the benefits. And if you are paying attention to the late press at all, you will see many, many articles in the last year on the importance of sleep in athletics. There are many professional athletes, think LeBron James, Kevin Durant, who have come out and are sleeping 10 to 12 hours and feel like that's a benefit. One aspect that I do want to throw in there is these are athletes that are expending 4,000 to 5,000 calories a day, so their sleep needs are greater than what the average person would need. And then finally, Better Health. Again, this is not the same website, but it is through Harvard again, and it sort of talks about tardiness and the benefits to just overall health. There is some evidence that people that don't get enough sleep are more prone to illness. Again, I don't think that's a connection to late school start, but it is something that is seen in the sleep field as something that's definitely connected. So to me, I wanted to focus, when we started, on a little bit of the benefits. At the same time, you can also start looking at the detriments, the things, the problems that occur when you don't get enough sleep. Some of these are on the flip side. They are the same thing that I just said, only in the negative. But we really do feel that it's, you can clearly track whether people are having trouble not getting enough sleep with different health concerns. One of the ones that is outstanding and has been present since at least 1998, so there is a lot of data out there, is motor vehicle safety. And when I bring that up, there are two studies that I mentioned, one that's from Kentucky. Again, it's a pretty interesting study. Basically, there was one county that changed its times to later school starts, and they saw a very clear reduction in their motor vehicle accidents, and they were able to compare that to the rest of the state, which had actually seen a mild or a small increase in accidents. And so there seemed to be a very clear correlation with that. In the second study, there's, it comes out of Virginia. Again, anytime we start looking at studies, you can start to pull up some things that you agree or disagree with. They showed a county-to-county comparison, and I'm sure they picked the most favorable one because there was like 29% decrease in motor vehicle accidents when the school start was later. Again, had they picked another county that was side-by-side, who knows if that number would be quite as big? But it was fairly dramatic, and I think shows us some of the things that go with that. In here, I thought it is worth bringing up that we have focused appropriately, I think, on alcohol and driving. And it has been shown, it has nothing, again, to do with late school starts, that driving while drowsy is equivalent to driving while drunk. And if we're asking our students to drive while they're drowsy, and you put that together with some of the information we know about teens, we're putting our kids at risk for motor vehicle accidents. Right, this slide is basically the Kentucky article and the Virginia article. Mental health concerns. We do see, again, that with decreased sleep, there's an increased risk for depression. Edina was one of the initial schools that started with late schools, and they spent a lot of time preparing their school district to consider this. Then when they made the change, one of the things that they did, which I think was pretty smart, because they were one of the first ones, was they did surveys. They did surveys before, they did surveys during, and they did surveys afterwards so that they could see what the effects were. And when they were talking to their counselors, it was very clear that the counselors felt that mental health concerns had gone down. Now, again, that's a survey, that's not objective, but subjective information from the people that were present are very clear that there was an improvement. And I would throw out there, if you talk to some of our teachers about Wednesdays here, that those tend to be healthier, more enjoyable days because our kids are generally, in my opinion, kids are getting there a little bit later, and I think that does make a difference. The bottom article there is actually the same as the first slide. I felt because that has such a big review, it also reviews mental health and depression. So that's why I included it there. And then finally, I call it intrapersonal strife or increased emotional lability. I think many people struggle with this, but more so when you're in your teenage years. And again, I think that's part of being a teenager. This isn't something that we don't know. And so when you have a lack of sleep, you tend to have increased emotional lability. And so when you combine that with kids that are already, I think, dealing with naturally emotions, you're putting yourself at higher risk for things like irritability, for overreacting to something, and less resilience. And so, again, in my concern or push for us to consider a later school start time, part of it is around can we improve these relationships that are already occurring and make them healthier? And then, one of the things that I was struck way back in 2014, so I didn't include it in here, I can certainly pull up my PowerPoint from 2014 later if anyone would like information on it, was, one of the findings was increased risky behavior, which I didn't really understand until I read about it. It does make sense, I think. But if you go back to emotional lability, if you go back to how kids are at this age group, there's less impulse control. When you have decreased sleep, you have less inhibition of your impulse control. So kids tend to do things that they maybe wouldn't do. So it starts actually pretty simple. You see it with kids that aren't getting enough sleep have more caffeine, they're at higher risk for smoking. One that, again, it seems like a leap, but they have been able to show it, is there's increased, there's riskier sexual behavior. And again, you would think that that doesn't come necessarily from a lack of sleep, and yet there have been very clear correlations made with that, and it hasn't just been one study. I included in this a CDC discussion. Part of that is because it did talk a little bit about the risky behavior. It is more of a survey on this CDC website that I sent you to on this one. I don't believe surveys are always as strong, but I felt that this would be helpful. And then finally, tardiness. So kids either coming late to first hour, sleeping through first hour because they're sleepy. Kyla Wallstrom, who I listed on this slide, is the leader that came from the University of Minnesota. It was her literally landmark study that came out in 2014, which is what kind of prompted me to come and talk to the school board, that lead, that led me to kind of down this pathway in hoping to talk to you about late school starts. She has two, I think there are two websites, one of which is she did herself. You know, believe it or not, that's not the one, I have another one that's later that's from her, where she cites in her own words kind of what led her down this pathway. And again, sort of like me, you get there by happenstance, and then you start seeing the evidence, and you realize how important it is to consider late school starts. So, to keep things simple, here's what's good, and here's what's bad. And I think it doesn't have to be any more difficult than what that slide is. Everything else that I gave you is just evidence to say why, why do we think this is an issue? If you take a look at who's supporting it, again, we're looking at our national leaders. You're looking at the American Academy of Sleep Medicine. This is literally sleep experts. They have come out quite strongly, we should have later school start times. If you look at the American Academy of Pediatrics, the group of doctors that's most responsible for what we consider standard of care for our kids, it's, we need to start our schools at a later time. And then the CDC, which is looking at risk factors for disease. So they're not in charge of our kids, they're just in charge of keeping down accidents and trying to get prevention. And all three have come out at different times with position papers that are quite clear that they believe schools should be starting at a later time. I did include a website. This is from a website that very strongly supports later school start time. I'm not trying to bend you that way, but they already have the resources there. It's a list of different places with position papers, some of which are subchapters, for example, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and then there's the Florida American. So some of it's redundant, but I thought it would give you a wide breadth of people that have put out there that they feel these things need consideration and from their point of view would be changing. With that, that's my, here's why we're doing this. But I also thought it would be important that you understand a little bit of the physiology behind sleep. And so I kind of like Kelvin and Hop, so you're going to see some of that. So he doesn't want to get up in the morning, then he can't stay awake when he's in school, and he doesn't want to go to bed when it's bedtime, and he finally says, look, I'm, this isn't my time clock, you know, I'm in Tokyo. Well, of course, nobody's in Tokyo. But the thing is, this is a little bit like what some of our teenagers go through, is they have to get up when they're, when they still want sleep, they're in school and they're sleepy, they're then told to go to bed so they can get enough sleep, and they're not sleepy because it doesn't match their time clock. So I gave, this slide is a little bit of an idea of what happens from a real life, how could you compare it? And so, kids generally are sleepy between 10 and 11. And so it would be the same as going to bed at what we might consider formerly appropriate bedtimes as if they were out in California. So if we flew them out to California, they'd be going to bed at a time that they felt they're, that we might feel is normal for when they have to get up for school. So I thought that was a nice little way to be able to look at it. I also think this is a really nice graphic because it tells you how hard things are. You know, you're being pushed, you're not getting enough sleep, you're trying to figure it out, and you can't go to bed till a certain time period because your body doesn't allow you to. You can climb into bed, you're just not sleeping, and then you have to get up early because you have to get up to go to school. And so it's a really tough situation. I find this actually with people in work all of the time. But it's even harder as a kid because you have less control over it. I actually pulled this from my slide back in 2014, and I did it to give you an idea of things that you have to consider. Again, I'm not sure that we're even at that point, but my thought would be that you have to at least start considering, well, what do we mean when we say late school start time and why? And this slide, I think, walks you through that. Finally, this is the article, the one that I was talking about. And I think it gives you a chance to read from the expert how she came to do her landmark study, why it was important. So this one and the one on the first slide, those would be the three that if you're going to read any, go to any websites, that's, this is where I would have you go. So, I always thought this was good, too. I don't think our kids are in horrible shape. I don't want to make it sound like we're in a crisis, and at the same time, I think we could make things a whole lot better, and I think we could do it in a way that works for everyone that's involved. So thank you again for letting me have a chance to present this. I did go through it sort of quickly, so because I figured you'll look at the parts that you want to look at, and I can, in a sense, I'd rather take that time and answer questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Hop. So we have, I'm assuming, a lot of questions from board members, so anyone like to begin? Amy?
Hi, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
I'm really excited that you're here, and I liked your presentation. I started hearing about later start times back in the late 90s, and I know a lot of data has been, come together since then, but it seems to me we already have a whole generation of kids who kind of missed out on the data, and I'm hoping that we can continue this conversation and move forward. I just have a couple of comments. The first is, I like this graph, but I was thinking for all the problems, there actually the flip side is another benefit, so, I mean, so you have eight benefits of good sleep instead of four problems and four benefits. As a parent and of a teenager, we love Wednesday mornings, by the way.
So do we.
And I think what you presented is very compelling, but to me, the most compelling piece is the safety issue, which I think the average person may not have heard as much about, but to know that there are fewer motor vehicle accidents caused, in general, I've read that 20% of all motor vehicle accidents of any age people are caused by drowsiness. And I imagine when you combine that with the inexperienced drivers that teenagers are, it's probably even higher, I'm just guessing though.
And the overconfidence.
So, so to me, you know, knowing that my child might get into an accident, they could hurt somebody else, they could hurt themselves, other people's children might hurt my child or me, to me, that is such a very compelling piece of information and a very strong reason for...
And that's some of the most strongly researched. So sometimes it's harder to make it objective. The motor vehicle accident information is some of the most objective, most, it's been verified, it's been checked in other areas.
And we've been talking a lot about keeping our students safe in many ways, and I think this is another thing we need to make sure we add to our plate. The one question I have is sort of, this is all very teen-related, do you have any thoughts about the elementary school ages and what they need?
So, to be fair, because I'm an advocate for this, I have looked at it. I think the research, though, is not anywhere near as strong. When schools have started late, some of the pushback tends to be from elementary parents, both because either their child will start school a little bit later, or they're worried about the light for bus stop pickup or bus stop drop-off. And the information that is out there is that this tends not to be a problem. And again, I had a slide from 2014 that shows when light comes and goes in Northfield and the dates around it. And you're talking about a very small number of days. It does not adversely affect elementary children's learning to start a little bit later, or consequentially to start a little bit earlier, because they're not having to get up when their brains would normally be asleep. And so they have not found anything there, but they have not done the massive amount of research that's been done on teenagers. So it's, I think, less strong evidence.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Rob?
I've learned a lot about sleep in the past year because I've been a patient of your colleague, Heather Saylor, who's in line.
Absolutely.
She's great. So we've talked a lot about good sleep hygiene and things that you should, you know, the routines that you should have, and one of the things is not to be on one of these right before bedtime.
Correct.
So with students having a lot of their homework now on iPads, I mean, do you have some suggestions for, you know, what's the best way to deal with getting, I mean, we're talking about the late start, but on the other end of it is, what are the things that you can do in the evening to make sure that bedtime is easier?
Is that your, yeah. So that is not, no, I'm not going to have a good and easy answer to that. It is very difficult. It's very similar to if your child has a concussion and all of your learning is on computer, you're not supposed to be looking at a screen. And so I do believe that when kids have higher levels of homework and they're not able to get those done until later, it is going to affect their sleep. Can we try to promote better sleep habits by asking kids, families, parents to shut down electronics typically 30 to 40 minutes before you go to bed? The answer is yes. How well is an individual child or an individual family going to follow that is too variable. One of the things that Edina did that was kind of important is they looked at when are starting times for things like practices? And so, because they're a big city school, there are times where they might not have, I'll make this up, a hockey practice until 8 o'clock at night because that's when they could get ice time for their hockey team. Well, they started to look at that and say, okay, does that really make sense? We're going to have them practice till 9:30. Usually you have to cool down, like, they're not getting to bed till 11:00. We're setting them up to have trouble. If you're going to do a basketball game in Winona and you're going to finish at 8:30 or 9:00, you're not getting home until 10:30 or 11:00. And a lot of kids can't do homework on the bus. My child is a diver and ended up doing homework till midnight one night because of that. So how do you plan around that? And so there are thoughtful answers for individual problems. I don't know, though, that there's a broad way to look at that, other than as a school system, how do we individually, different groups, as they do things, try to prevent staying up too late in areas that, as a school board, you can control? So I don't know if that answers it.
That's good. Thanks.
Ellen?
So thank you for coming and giving us sort of the update. I was really struck by all the different aspects, and I was thinking about the last board meeting where, like Amy, we were talking about school safety and how to keep our kids safe, and you brought up many of the risk factors that we have somewhat control over with the start time. And I thought that was really compelling to think about, is that this is something that we actually can control and could do something about, and it's really empowering. The one thing, it's not really a question, but if you could review, I remember in 2014, that was really helpful for me in terms of thinking about talking to community members about this, is tell us a little bit more about the physiology of why teens, it's not that they're being lazy, but...
You know.
Yeah.
Very good. So, and two things, also, again, because I think it helps sometimes to read it, too, the study from the Air Force will go over this as well. But, long story short... short, our brain has a number of ways of signaling us to go to school. And those signals are on what's called a circadian rhythm. And so based on your age, it's a certain length of time, and it occurs generally at, around a certain light schedule. And so one of the things that's hard for teenagers, there's no explanation that I'm aware of, this shifts and goes later. So if you're not a teenager, not in puberty, you might be sleepy somewhere between 8:00 and 10:00. That would be fairly common. Your sleep needs are going to be generally about nine to 10 hours, and then you'll wake up typically 6:00, 7:00. Those would be very pretty standard numbers. It doesn't mean each individual kid, you could come up with examples that don't match that, but that would be pretty normal. What happens is, as a teenager, your melatonin gets released a little bit later, your sleep signals start a little bit later. So instead of feeling sleepy at 10:00, it's usually a little bit later, or 9:00. And then those signals keep running until about 7:00 or 8:00. And so when they're supposed to be in school, their signals are still telling them that they should be sleepy. And when they're trying to go to bed, because they're trying to be good kids, they're not going to fall asleep. We know that there are signal promoters at the end of all of our days. So we build up what's called a sleep need, and it goes up and up and up and up until we finally fall asleep. Well, what happens is, the body knows that and starts to send signals that say, stay awake, stay awake, stay awake. And then once those go away, the sleep drive kicks in, and then we fall asleep. And so what happens is, all of that shifts about an hour to two hours later. Now, there are night owls and larks. Those people do that, too. They just do it at different times. So let's say that your kid always went to bed super early and always got up super early. They're still going to shift. They're just, their shift looks more normal, because instead of going to bed really early, they just go to bed a little bit early. And if you were a night owl, you will shift, too, but now you shift really late. So instead of going to bed at midnight, now you don't want to go to bed till 1:00 or 2:00. So it's, it, it happens to everybody. It's just your individual characteristics will control whether that looks okay or doesn't look okay, or how easy it is to adjust to school when you're doing it. So hopefully that was, yeah, helpful.
Okay. When you say teens, do you mean from like 7th grade through graduation, or are we really talking high school teens?
Great question. Again, most of the studies are looking at older teens, 16, 17, 18. However, all of this starts basically with puberty. So you could have kids in 6th grade, you could have kids in 8th grade that are starting to see that shift. So a really mature kid will, will start to have this shift in, in 6th grade. And so it does affect our middle school. They're not generally driving, you know, that, that, that is one area that, of course, you don't see. The other thing is academically, testing is less standardized. And when I mean that, I'm talking about national tests that, you know, a researcher can go find, an ACT, an SAT, you know, things like that. So it, it's harder to, to track some of those things at the younger age. So researchers are always going to go to where it's easiest to get the information. That's going to be your later teenagers. That's also one of the reasons I truly love that Air Force Academy study, is because it's 18-year-olds. They could just as well be in high school. The academy is set up better than high schools are, and the, the kids are more highly motivated. And so you, you just have, it's easier to delineate where problems are, where they aren't. And they found by shifting their classes that their students got smarter, even though they weren't. The, the professors actually looked like they were better professors. And they could compare them, because some of these professors taught at 7:00 AM, some of them taught later. And it, the ability of this study to, to look at things, and it happened over three or four years, it's truly, if you have any doubt about it, it's the kind of study that goes, huh, that, this must be real.
So my other question is, so the studies must account for the fact that there's some kids, and I, I know Northfield has lots of them, that if they know they don't have to go to school until 9:00, they'll suck up that extra hour the night before doing more homework, or watching more videos, or...
Yes.
You know, their phone longer. So it's almost like they're negating the benefit of that late start. So those must control for that?
No. So the beauty is, they've looked at that.
Okay.
And they have found that kids actually don't generally stay up later. Now, again, you're going to find some students who, who do exactly what you just said. So there are individuals that will take advantage because they weren't going to go to bed anyway. But the feeling, or not the feeling, the, the studies show that kids end up going to bed at about the same time, because that's when they're sleepy. Their body's telling them to go to bed. And so unless, again, another, you know, we talked about what we can do as a school district. So kids bringing phones to bed, okay? The, the ding, oh, now I got to look at it. That's something that can keep somebody up later than it should be. Well, it doesn't matter if you put them, had them go to bed earlier, or didn't allow them to go to bed. That's going to happen. So they actually have controlled for that and shown that it is absolutely not an issue when you look at a, a broad spectrum, as opposed to if you look at an individual.
Yeah, absolutely. One more quick question. Did it also control for the temptation of sports teams or academic teams or whatever to slip in a 7:00 AM practice?
Yes. So, again, sometimes you're asking really specific, and there's things that are close to that. So for example, one of the things that's talked about, I think, at LaterSchoolStart.net, I believe it's in there, is kids that are already academically pushing themselves, push themselves. So guess what? If your child is in student government, what time do they have to show up? So now you're still giving that kid another hour of sleep, because instead of showing up at 7:00, they're showing up at 8:00. Now, are they getting as much benefit as the kid that doesn't have to show up till 9:00? The answer is no. But are they still benefiting from it? So the answer is, yes, they still benefit. No, there are, they, not all kids are going to benefit, because you, you are going to slide some things in there naturally, but they're already being, they're already there anyway. They're just even less sleep time. So that's a great, those, both of those are really good questions that lots of people will have. Like, that's, those are common concerns. Another concern that I read about a lot is, what about kids and athletics? What about kids and jobs? And they did studies, and, and when I say they did studies, they looked at this, this was partially controlled for, to see if there were issues. Most places don't mind if a child is showing up at 4:00 or 4:30, as opposed to 3:00 or 3:30. With athletics, it was an adjustment. Not all the coaches were real pleased. They had to adjust when their practices were. And so there are some things that, as a whole, we have to make adjustments to. And I don't think they're all perfect, but if your, if your idea is, we want the best learning environment, and we want kids to be successful, these other things can be adjusted in a way that doesn't hurt them, but does change their timing.
Amy? I get another question.
Yeah.
So I'm still interested in the younger years. And one thing you mentioned was puberty, and I know girls are going through puberty at 9:00 or 10:00 these days, and so I don't know what their, their sleep habits are. But ultimately, because of how our bus schedules work, we would probably end up changing everyone's time. I'm just throwing that out there. Does there any disadvantage to elementary schools to be starting later? Have you read anything like that?
Again, I have read that there is not. Like, there is, there, but there also is not a lot of studies on that. So that is much less, I'm not saying that with a, yes, it's, you know, they're, they're fine. The evidence from the schools that do it are that those kids are, are doing well, that they don't seem to suffer from it. At, at the same time, it's, I can't say it with the same research sort of background that I tried to give for the other information. The other thing that I think is always difficult is sorting out the busing schedule. And that was one of the issues back in 2014. If, if you strongly consider this, and it gets to that point where we're like really moving forward, that will be one of the issues that has to be dealt with.
Has there been any reviews or comments about parents' work time? You know, their, how it affects, affects parents who are working?
So, yes. Much like how do kids handle the, the work, and how do athletics happen? So again, has it been studied, or is it, to me, it's usually a survey sort of information? And like anything, anytime you ask for change, you're going to run into people that are frustrated or don't want to do that. Having said that, if you look at the, and I don't have a number, which is unfortunate maybe, but if you look at the number of schools that have changed to a late school start time, and then the numbers that said, okay, that didn't work, we got to go back, it's tiny. And when I say tiny, I mean, like, under 5%, probably even under that. And so like anything else, parents adjust. Just, I, I was here when we changed to the 9:00 Wednesdays. Guess what? I don't, I don't hear anyone complaining about it, and yet it's a change, and it, and it's clearly different than any other school day. And so it gets sorted out, but the first year is always tough, because you have to change either who's with the child, who's available. You know, school systems, and I want to be clear that I'm not directing this, sometimes set up places for kids to be able to be watched, because a parent can't, because they have to leave. Sometimes parents' work schedules will change. Again, not everyone has that ability. So it gets sorted out, is, long story short.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All has been informative. Had they had this when I was in school, I probably would have been a better student. Having, having been retired for a while, I've been practicing your philosophy for several years. And people say, what do you do? And I say, well, nothing. I don't start till about 10:00. But I really am excited about that. And my concern is, there's a lot of moving parts that we need to work together. I want to hear from the community on this, because much of, we, what we do as a board is, first we provide leadership, we also provide listening. And so I, I'm really excited about this. I think it's got wonderful opportunities, but we need to be in it all again, to make it work. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, Dr. Hoff, we really appreciate your work, your passion, and most of all, your tenacity. We were here four years ago, and you're back. And I think, you know, what I'm hearing as a board is that we have an opportunity now. I mean, I think as a board, we always have to think, you know, really stuck in what we know is best for kids, and, and the evidence is compelling, and it was compelling four years ago, and it's, it's still there. So I think, you know, we have an opportunity to maybe look in earnest at this point as to, you know, how we can support. I agree with Noel. This isn't something that we can necessarily implement in the foreseeable future, but we could look at it in, in terms of building the, you know, building the education for our community to understand, and to understand how it could work. You know, I know YZN just two years ago, and Amy Gorowitz sat at the School Board National Convention and listened to YZN. I actually paid a fair amount of attention to what they did two years ago. And again, there was, there was a lot of community input in terms of what they, what they wanted. And I, I give great credit to that board, because there was some pushback, but they understood what was best, and they moved forward. And I absolutely agree. I think that they have shown, very few, if any, schools go back. You know, they, they go there and they go back.
You just don't see it very often.
So it's sort of changed, but yet really being cognizant of our own local community and what that means for, you know, for those in our community in terms of their, our parents' work schedules, et cetera. But those are the kinds of things that we obviously have to look at. But, you know, we have that opportunity, I think. And I think that we, knowing how compelling the research is, and understanding what, you know, our task is, is doing the best we can for our students, that, you know, we hopefully will have an opportunity to really maybe put something in, into, into play that will work for our, our community. And that's what I think we will try to move forward and endeavor to do.
Well, thank you. I would also like to offer, because I, I think it is about collaboration, if you have questions, please feel free. Dr. Hillman has my number. He, I'd like you to hand it out if they need it. If you don't know, you know, Margaret, again, I thought you had a number of really good questions that lots of people have. And if you decide to move down this road, you're going to have to answer with the community. And as a board member, you're going to want to know that answer ahead of time. And what I can do is facilitate getting those answers for you. I also find it fascinating that there are many websites for starting school late and not any for keeping it as is. And I think that that actually says quite a bit. So, anyway.
And I know Dr. Hillman has some comments, but I just wanted to tell you that we absolutely will, to be very, very, very involved as we move, as we move forward. So we appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I want to thank Brian for coming. And he and I started a conversation back in December. And in my teaching days, we called this presentation Activating Prior Learning, because Brian did come and present in 2014. And we know since then, it wasn't a right fit for us at the time, but we know since then, several school districts in Minnesota have moved to a later start time. The research has some, had some additional confirmation. And so there's some additional studies really supporting what Dr. Hoff is saying. And I look at this as really kind of the start of a conversation, as Noel had mentioned. Want to be really clear to folks that this is not any kind of change that we're looking at for the 2018-19 school year. I think one of the lessons that we've learned from in the past is when we're looking at some kind of change that would impact the community, and I think it's fair to say, a pretty reasonably dramatic way. We need to make sure people have enough time to process and for us to have a very good and strong and rational discussion, and an objective discussion. So what we anticipate doing is, as we start this spring, we have Mr. Kudry, as you know, he teaches the statistics class here at the high school. And the project that that class is going to look at this spring is this. So they're going to learn about how to do some phone surveying, and we're going to try to talk to parents within the district through that class to start with, what are the kinds of hurdles that are for our community, because every community has some different hurdles that they face. So we'll start by using our own students to do some research on it. You also know that we have a strong history of how we gain public feedback. We will plan, as time goes forward, to hold several public meetings where we hope to partner with Dr. Hoff and provide some information, so that you can have a chance to hear from the community and get some summaries of what folks are thinking. And at that point, we may even use a thought exchange after that to gain some additional feedback in terms of what people are thinking once we've got a more specific plan. We also remember back in 2014, when Dr. Richardson was the superintendent, he and I had created some scenarios for you with our leadership team in terms of potential ways we could look at addressing this. Now, since we have four years between that time and now, we're going to resurrect those plans, but we will also take a look at, are there other things that we have learned since then about people who have actually gone through the process? So we have let some other people do the piloting and be on the leading edge, and we have the opportunity to learn from them about that. So we just want to, you know, again, I would anticipate if there was anything that we'd be looking to do for the 2019-20 school year, we'd be looking, I'd be looking to bring that decision to by December, you know, so that people would have a chance to really have weighed in on it, and they would also have a lot of time to plan. We could, I think Dr. Hoff would be pleased if we even looked at it getting it done two years from now, because, well, we don't want to let it happen. We don't want something, a pressure of making a decision to start for a following school year to interrupt what would be something good for students long-term. So it could be even planned for the 2020-21 school year. I think the key thing is trying to see, is this something that would work in our community? I'm guessing if we polled the students who are here tonight for various government classes, we know what the answer would probably be, which is probably big thumbs up. We want to capture the research, we want to do what's best for our kids, and we want to more so have a community conversation. So consider this the start of that. And we want to thank Dr. Hoff for his time.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Good discussion, great question. Okay, so that is actually our only topic for discussion and report, so we'll move on to items for individual action. The first item being the 2018-19 operating capital and long-term facilities maintenance budget. I know that Val Mertsdorf did, and Jim Coles did a very thorough presentation at our last board meeting. So if I can ask for a motion, then if there are any questions, I know that Val would be here to answer them. So is there a motion to approve the 2018-19 operating capital and long-term facilities maintenance budgets as outlined? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions or comments for either Dr. Hillman or Val Mertsdorf? or Val Mertsdorf?
I say this every time.
Yeah, and we want to hear it.
I say it every time, and I'm gonna say it every time.
Absolutely.
I think the taxpayers of this school district should feel very assured that their money is well-watched by Dr. Hillman and by Val and their staff. I'm always impressed with the details and the transparency and just the care, the thoughtful handling of taxpayer money. And I'll say it every single time I get a chance. So thank you.
Absolutely, excellent. And I was not at the last board meeting, but I was able to watch the view, the tape of the board meeting. So I really appreciated the board members' really great questions. I thought they were excellent. And again, such a thorough presentation, which is really why we don't have a lot of questions and comments at this point, right? So, Dr. Hillman?
I just want, in addition, thank you, Margaret. And we also want to just commend Jim Colseth, our director of the administration. He does a lot of work on the 10-year plan and making sure that we're queuing these things up so that we have the chance to get the best bids. We want to make sure that the work gets done for the least amount of money as reasonable. And so, really appreciate Jim Colseth and his team and the way that they facilitate that process.
Absolutely. Thank you for adding that.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item for individual action is the expansion of the contingency fund. Again, Dr. Hillman did a presentation at our prior board meeting about that strategy and what the ask was. So is there a motion to expand the contingency fund from a 4.0 FTE to a 6.0 FTE as presented beginning with the 2018-19 school year? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions or comments for Dr. Hillman?
Question.
Rob?
On the nice summary here that you provided, it says, "This is a strategy, not a fix." So I'm just wondering, like, are there steps going forward for the fix part of this? I mean, because a lot of these are, a lot of the problems seems to come from, we've got, as you say, such a robust program of so many different offerings. We, you know, when we have to make cuts because of budget concerns, not because of class size concerns. But is that something we would ever think about doing?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think all of you know that I'm pretty true to our strategic plan. And I think if you look at all of the different priorities, you can identify very clear groups that have gotten together to talk about complaints of our strategic plan. And I think you will notice that the class size priority is one of the most difficult ones to challenge, or to attack, excuse me. And I think a real, I think that the problem will never truly be fixed. And the reason that I say that is that when we respond to the desires and the needs of our students in terms of especially at the secondary level with the kinds of courses that they're interested in, you know, the community of Northfield for years has had a community trying to have what Principal Druhlir calls a comprehensive education. So the struggle that we have is that a, is a true fix even possible, given the desire for the variety of courses that we want to offer? I will tell you, I'm not sure there is a true, permanent fix. Now, that being said, are there just some decisions that we can make as a school board and administration that would do a better job of potentially evening out some classes? Absolutely. However, I also know that this is that theory where every action has an equal and opposite reaction, right? And we don't offer anything that does not have value. Everything that we offer, every approach that we have, has value. However, it might have value to one group of people and maybe not as much to another group of people. So that is the push and pull that we have. I think that we need to try to continue to engage in a conversation like that, both with our internal publics and our external publics, because both people inside the district and outside the district look at this a little bit of a different way. So the short answer is, I'm not sure we will ever fix it. Does that mean that we should stop pursuing it? Of course not. We make some choices in terms of the programming that we offer at the elementary level and at the secondary level that do have an impact. And if we could neatly place students in every single class with the perfect average of 27.5 that we have at the high school, we would have a lot of unhappy people because they would not have the same kind of choice, you know, that they have right now. And so that is the piece that we are always going to chase. That, part of that is what makes Northfield, Northfield. And we hear over and over from people that they moved here partially because of the excellent public school system that we are in possession of right now and trying to make sure that we continue that tradition. The issue is that we're never going to get away from this if we want to maintain that kind of reputation and the kind of choice and the kind of opportunities for students. And the students who are here tonight also know that, you know, because we offer some courses that are singleton classes, so all but 160 courses that we offer, 75 are only offered once a day at high school. In one of those singleton classes, they may only have 18 students in it. But we may have a class at another school our size doesn't have that we're offering. And the trade-off for that is they have maybe 33, maybe 35 in another course. The question is, what are we willing to trade off for? And so, I intentionally put that it's a strategy and not a fix because the 6.0 contingency FTE gives us the chance to respond on an annual basis to what the choices of students are. And I've studied this quite a bit, as you might imagine. And this is the best I've got for you right now because we value what we offer. We want to put our kids in the driver's seat because we want to make sure that we support all career and college pathways. It's a strategic priority. In order for, to do that, there are times where we're gonna have to support classes that are a bit smaller. And we're gonna have to live with classes that are a bit larger. And it's not perfect, but it's where we're at today. And we won't stop. It's not like we're saying, oh, we can't figure it out. This is what we can do for today. And then we will continue to try to improve in that area.
Excellent, thank you. Other questions or comments? So we have a motion and a second regarding the addition of the contingency fund for the 2018-19 school year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Another item for individual action, which was reviewed at our last board meeting, was the 2019-20 school year calendar. So is there a motion to approve the 2019-19-20 school year calendar as presented? Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Margaret. Okay. Questions or comments regarding the calendar? After we've had a chance to review it this past two weeks. No questions or comments? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And our last item for individual action, and this is one that resulted from a lengthy and really rich discussion at the last board meeting regarding addressing our legislatures with some concern around school safety measures, et cetera. In your board packet, there was a letter that we are proposing to actually present to legislators tomorrow as far, as part of our Schools for Equity and Education Day at the Capitol. Board members, Amy Gorowitz and Ellen Iverson, myself and Dr. Hillman will be meeting with legislators tomorrow. So it's a really excellent opportunity to hand-deliver this letter to them. So I would ask if there was a motion to authorize the submission of the board's collective letter to legislators regarding school safety measures as presented? Is there a motion? Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions or comments regarding the letter? Amy?
I like the letter. And I was really happy with the process of getting everyone involved and getting all the ideas together. So thank you, Dr. Hillman, for that. I do have one change that I've already discussed with Dr. Hillman. And I asked that I think that we should have Dr. Hillman sign it as well. And he has said, if you're willing, he's willing. So...
Board members, some weigh in on that? See if the group is amenable to that. And as always, Matt, Dr. Hillman, very prepared. So we do, actually Anita did pull together two drafts, one the letter that would include Dr. Hillman's signature and one that would not. So it appears that the board is unable to including Dr. Hillman's signature. So is there any other questions or comments on the letter? Margaret?
I read through it several times. So I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to bring forward a question before tonight. I had to work. I feel, this is a wonderful letter, by the way. Absolutely wonderful. I feel though that the very first bullet point should be significantly increase school funding to facilitate reasonable school security enhancements. Because when we say fund, you could say, well, we do give you funding. Use it for what you see. But we all know that funding has not kept pace with inflation. Minnesota schools are playing catch-up with their needs before this became a need even. So I would just like to see an ask of significantly increase school funding to address not only the needs we had prior to these horrific attacks, but to fund schools to address this issue as well as. That would be my ask.
Maybe specific, I'm sorry, exactly.
Think you're looking at the third bullet and the first.
Yeah, the third bullet, I feel, should be the first bullet. And then it should be worded significantly increase school funding to facilitate reasonable school security enhancements, comma, including personnel and facilities expenditures. Because prior to all these schools needing to put in enhanced entryways and more personnel and so on, we were still underfunded based on inflation.
So Margaret, one of the things that we have is we do have a little bit of a time crunch because we're planning to deliver this tomorrow.
I know. So that's why, I'm sorry, I was thinking about it.
And what I would like to offer as an alternative is since we are going to be hand-delivering this letter, should we approve to legislators? If you would be confident in my ability to articulate that what we really mean is substantial increase. And anyone who's accompanied me knows that I am not shy to say that. Should I talk about it?
I didn't think, or someone. I didn't think you would be, but I just didn't want to be too passive in our ask. This is, this is important.
And I think if board members are comfortable with the board members who are going to the Schools for Equity Day at the Capitol tomorrow, you know, combined with our ability to talk to folks, we will certainly emphasize that point. Because as you know, there's a couple of different bills in the legislature right now. You know, one of which is talking about opening the long-term facilities maintenance revenue program, not additional funding, but also, you know, specifically looking at some increase. So there's a couple of different bills in the legislature. We'll certainly comment on those tomorrow. But if you think that that's acceptable, we can certainly do that.
I would be fine with that.
Okay, excellent. Noel?
I, I support Margaret, again, with her thoughts. My comment is, I want to make sure that we don't blur the two important issues. Security is an issue. Funding is an issue. We've been talking funding for years and years and years. Security is also an issue. And we want to make sure that they clearly understand that these are two important issues. That, one, we argue, safety to children, it's dependent on the students, it's dependent on both. You need, you know, the physical safety, but you need the other safety also. And I expect that Jim Colseth will be sufficient in delivering that message.
Okay, okay. Wonderful comments. Anything else? All right, so we have a motion and a second regarding the letter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So I will ask if board members could just have, stop by and have, be able to sign the letter tonight. Anita has those prepared. And we will hand-carry them to the legislators tomorrow. And we will have an update at our people meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that is it for items for individual action. Then we move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there was a few personnel items as well as a grant opportunity, or, no, I'm sorry. It was a...
A grant.
Grant application, I'm sorry, in the table file that was added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? I don't want to pull, I just have a question. So is plus at Green Bell Park? It will help us, thanks, that's all. Okay. So is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. All those in favor approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Two items for individual action will begin with the enrollment report. Dr. Hillman?
Yep, and so the segment for information is the enrollment report. And what you'll see is that as of March 1, we are at 3995 students excluding early childhood and part-time independent study students at the ALC. A few students, we had held steady at 3999 for two months in a row and are down just a few students here in March, not totally uncommon. Still within year shot of where we had really got started in September. we had really got started in September. So we are down a few students, but I think that we are right on the right track. So that's the enrollment report.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Amy?
I actually have a question. Under the grand total, it went up by 27 students in the last month, and I know that's a lot of the part-time ALC students. And I've been looking at the enrollment at the high school compared to the ALC, and somehow a lot more students are ending up at the ALC as in general. Where are they coming from?
So there's a couple of different things. Number one, we saw a small increase in early childhood, which is not uncommon as people get screened, unless they go through the early childhood screen, may qualify for services. So not totally uncommon, small increase there, but that was four of the students. And then I think the other piece is that remember that as an area learning center, we bring in students not only from Northfield, but from other places as well. So it is actually quite common for us to see in the second half of the year, especially in the first semester, students who may transfer into the ALC. And again, you can see it's a mix of people who are there full-time. It's also a mix of people who are making up missed credits. You know, so it could be a senior who maybe had not passed a course during the first semester and they're coming back for credit recovery. So that's why, if you remember, probably about a year ago, we modified this report so that that number totally at the bottom pulls those folks out. So it's more of a true number of who is actually in our building's K-12. So my sense is that as you get to the second semester, you see an increase of the students who are accessing the ALC in a part-time way to make up a specific credit in order to maintain their progress toward graduation.
So they're not actually coming into the building or?
Happens a couple of different ways. So for example, there are some students who do come to the building, and they do that credit recovery program in the computer lab. I would also believe there are some students who may do a combination of that. So there's night students too.
Ellen. So I just want to comment on that is I think what that shows us is what a really excellent, what Daryl's been doing at the ALC, that we can, that we can provide that service to students that we do provide at graduation rate for students in a different way. So I think, even though we see the numbers shift, I'm really happy that we have that as an option.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's excellent, it's one of the most personalized situations we have in the district. And so the area learning center, as we all know, does just an excellent job of meeting students where they're at and helping them with their progress toward graduation. Students progress at that, at different rates. And so sometimes, you might have seen recently, we are, because it's such a small overall number, you know, you can have a swing in what the graduation rate would be, because sometimes there are students who may need to take more than the traditional four years. That's why the state does calculate a four, five, six, and seven-year graduation rate. The key thing is making sure we meet students where they're at and helping them progress on their journey toward graduation.
Great. Okay. So there's that, another item for, last item for information, Dr. Hillman is going to present possible changes to summary minutes that the Northfield School District submits to the media.
Yes, and so I want to give full credit, I want to go back to one thing from the letter that we approved, if that's okay?
Yes.
If I just thought of it, that as I, as I put that together, there, I did use several sources. So I want to make sure, as a good researcher, I need to make sure I cite mine. And so we, I did look at several different things from around the country, things from Fairfax County, Virginia school systems, some other folks who have taken some action. So not all my, so I just want to be transparent that some of that came from other sources. Thank you for helping to clear my conscience on that. I meant to talk about it before, but there were some other good questions.
You were inspired by a lot of people who are, keep, have this as a.
Absolutely.
Priority, and it's.
All right. I just needed to get that off my chest. Okay, thank you. Very good.
Excellent. So we're all about the transparency.
That's right. So now we're back to the board minutes. And again, I want to thank Anita Hazi, the Executive Assistant Superintendent of the Board of Education. As you know, Anita started this position in late January. And one of the things that both her predecessor, Anita Delzer, and I talked about was that, you know, Anita had been here for quite some time, and Anita would be the first to say, we do many things because that's the way that we've done them, because it's worked, because we've kept moving forward. And so one of the charges that Anita and I talked before Anita came on was to make sure that we talked to her about saying, make sure that you're taking a look at our processes and saying, is there a better way? Because we've been doing something for a while, doesn't mean that that's the right way to do it. So Anita has done an excellent job in her first month here, a month and a half here in Northfield. We're thrilled to have her. And one of the things that she has noticed that we can do a little bit differently would be how we publish our school board minutes in the local newspaper. So we're not talking about the publication that we have on the website or that come to you in the, in the packet. Those would be the full unabridged version. But there is a, there is a process in which a school board can choose in its official local newspaper to publish something called a set of summary school board minutes as opposed to the full school board minutes. And we, we pay for this by the column inch. So, you know, we're looking at it as a potential, very minor, but way to save some dollars. And so Anita, would you mind just kind of walking through just a little, we've got a set of original minutes in your board packet? And then we have a sample of what those minutes from February 12 would have looked like should you have approved us to submit summary minutes. So would you just briefly share with us?
Yes. This was brought to my attention when I went to a Big 9 administrative assistant, and a number of those schools are publishing summary minutes. There are certain things that you must do. The summary must be accurate, clear, coherent, and include the essential elements of resolutions, financial statements, and any other official actions. And for us, for this to happen, it would have to be an action on the part of the board. But I don't begrudge you any actions.
And so I just, I really applaud Anita for taking a look at this and saying, hey, we can do this a little bit differently. If you really, if you take a look at the sample versus the original, or the proposed, one of the things that, of course, as you know, in fact Julie commented on this to me before the board meeting, this is the month where the appointments of personnel start to ratchet up because we're starting to hire people for summer programming, you're starting to hire people for next year. And so a significant portion of the minutes that are published are the personnel action items. And you'll notice that that is not a piece that's required me verbatim in the official publication. So what we wanted to do is bring this forward to you. We gave you a sample with the February 12 meeting, which frankly is not, it's a good example, but it's not the best example, because at February 12, we have very few personnel actions. Of course, if we did the June 1, we would save quite a few column inches, right, by doing that? So we just wanted to share this with you. We will most likely bring it back to you in April to ask for your blessing to move forward with this. It is a technical provision that the board has to do. Again, what the School Boards Association tells us, this is a perfectly appropriate way. We are still being very transparent and giving between the everything that they need because we are publishing the summary minutes. But of course, as you know, on our school district website, you have minutes, agendas, and packets going back to, what, 2006 or '07? You have videos going back quite a few years, and even last year, we started to link the videos right on the board page, so people don't even have to go to the streaming site. So we try to make sure that people have everything that they need, but if we can do something more efficiently, we think it's our job to bring that to your attention. So that's the piece of information. And again, thank you to Anita for bringing this forward, and, you know, we'll certainly bring it forward for an item for action if we hear that people say, hey, that seems reasonable to bring it forward and have more discussion.
Amy, a question.
I always have a question.
So can I give a few comments on? But you can, thank you, Anita, first of all, for jumping right in and coming up with ways that we can do things better. Been here two months, and this is great. So here are a couple of just my thoughts, and you can do what you want with them, but with the header that says proceedings of the regular school board meeting, well, I like the word proceedings. Down below, we have approval of minutes. And so I think it's confusing to call the same document two different things, especially to the public. So I would say, since we call the minutes everywhere, we should probably call the minutes of the regular school board meeting just to be consistent.
I would just ask if, Anita, if that's even, could we call it that minutes? Because it isn't, it isn't exactly minutes. So I sort of assumed that proceedings, you know, and was.
I see what you're saying. You know, more general.
Maybe because it's not an actual official minute, that it would have to be called something else. I think it's a great question, and one that, you know, you maybe don't know the answer, but it could be.
I don't know the answer.
I have another solution to it, which is actually my next comment. Since these are going to be published anyway, I'm wondering if we can take out the sections that say agenda changes and approval of minutes, when there's really nothing there anyway? And so we're not calling it minutes and proceedings in the same document? And if they are, just, if we decide to define proceedings as sort of abbreviated minutes, that, I don't think those two sections add anything, and it would save us money. And those were basically it. Otherwise, I think it looks nice and very, the format is very clear and easy to read. I like the consistency of the bullet points instead of, you know, here we have alphabet and bullet points in different areas, which I understand the reasons for that, but I like just the straight bullet points we give for the abbreviated document.
Yeah, those are great comments. Other comments?
And I just would like to comment that, you know, what we'll do is we will, there's, I believe that there's a specific formula we need to use.
Yeah.
Excuse me. So what we'll do is we'll go back and ask, because sometimes in this kind of thing, there are some magic words you have to use and some pieces that you need. So what we'll do is we'll go back and we will formally review, since I'm hearing an interest move forward, we'll get some more specific things around these questions from the School Boards Association. And then when we bring back, you know, we need to make sure we follow the appropriate protocol if we're going to choose to do this. So there may be some, what I've learned over the years is from time to time, there are some magic words that you have to have in, in order to meet the criteria of the legislation that allows us to do this. So, you know, what we'll do is now that we know that there's an interest, we didn't want to put too much effort in until we knew there was some kind of interest, we will bring back a more formal proposal to ask you to act upon it at the next meeting, Anita.
I actually have, I like this, but it's, there might be a way of emphasizing the announcements and recognition section. We're always talking, I'm always promoting the points of pride, the points of, you know, raider pride. You know, maybe we can be doing that somehow. We have to pay to get this published anyway. Maybe somehow we can make that part a little more noticeable.
I think the strategy for that would be us to try to help use those points and talking with our local media to maybe do some stories on that. Because remember, these are published in the legal section. And the legal section typically isn't the place where people, you know, go to right away. So I'd be concerned that that would get, I do agree.
Why is it so?
Well, I mean, I, I love a good legal section like anybody else, you know, but I also watch, you know, city council meetings and things like that online, so.
Maybe they could be little stars instead of bullet points, yeah.
We could put it in the names to note.
I do agree, doing more with the announcements or recognitions, and that could be, that's another piece that Anita and I are working on, or basically create our own little journalism outlet between she and I to place good news stories on the website. We are looking at creating a Facebook page for the district, something we have not done intentionally for quite a few. So your point is well taken. I think there are some other ways where we could actually get more bang for our buck, so to speak, with making sure that these things are followed up on and posted on the website or through other social media kinds of outlets, so.
Okay.
And the front of the community services brochure next month.
Yes.
A bunch of.
Excellent. So Erin, just again, as you know, we, one of the things we implemented is the first time in November, you saw we had one page that had a letter from me and a couple of other pieces. And then, as Erin just said, what I actually do, we now have two pages this month, and I actually, the main source of what I'm getting is from the announcements. So we're using that to put it as the district update in the community services brochure. Again, trying to reach out, that's, remember, the community services brochure is something that goes to every household in the district, plus a few that aren't in the district, because it's actually cheaper to deliver to entire mail routes as opposed to breaking it off. So that's something that goes to everybody. And we are now, we've got some good feedback from people in the community. We now have that at the beginning of the community services brochure. And so that that is an opportunity for people to see that right out of the gate. We've expanded it to two pages, and I think we'll keep trying to expand, because adding pages to that is not the expensive part, it would be mailing something again. So again, we're trying to use a method that we're already having in place and just expanding, if that makes sense. And, you know, we'll be able to reduce a little bit in terms of the, what we have to publish, so that will allow us to maybe get different ones, I know about.
So following, getting off topic with you here, are we mentioning the thought exchange or anything like that? Because I remember we went through the whole bond process. People said, oh, I didn't know anything about thought exchange and what's happening, and and so if this is coming up for publication soon?
So our alignment of time did not work with that, because the way that we start, you know, thought exchange, the share step is completed, and the star step will launch this week, but the community services brochure does not come out for another month, right?
Yeah, it's mailed on the 13th to 14th of April, whichever is. Okay.
So unfortunately, that was not a vehicle that we can use at this time for that.
Okay. All right. Anita, thank you for your work. And we'll look forward to looking at another sort of fine tune, but this, this looks really good, and I think it's a great step forward for us, so. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So we now have completed all items for business. We announced about future meetings. You know, we are not going to meet March 26 due to spring break, so our next meeting is actually April, Monday, April, Monday, April 9. Oh, I'm sorry.